The City of Cottonwood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting, Monday, January 28, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. First order is to roll call, please, members.
Commissioner Dowell?
Here.
Commissioner Dowling?
Here.
Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
Vice Chairman Wasden?
Present.
Chairman Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Hart absent, and Commissioner Masters absent.
Thank you very much. Before we get into the other agenda items, Brenda Campbell, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your services. I know that Amber and group will appreciate the help. Also in attendance tonight, I see we have our new city manager, Ron Corbin. Congratulations and welcome. Would like to say a few words, please, sir.
Well, I just want to introduce myself again, Ron Corbin. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron Corbin, the new city manager, beginning of week four, and I'm still here, and they haven't let me go yet. And Doug retires this weekend, is his last day. I think a party is on Saturday. So if you're available, I know that he has a wide-open invitation, but I think they're going to keep me, which is a very exciting, beautiful community. So thank you guys for volunteering and for your guys' service, and my doors are always open if you need anything.
Thank you, sir. Good day. See ya. All right. Next item is approval of the minutes of the December 17, 2018 regular meeting. Do I see any corrections, additions, deletions from anybody? If not, Mr. Vice Chairman?
I move we approve the minutes from the December 17, 2018 regular meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Dowling seconds the vice chairman's motion approval. All roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Mr. Norwood?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Wasden?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
Yes. You can absolutely carry it. All right. The next item, elections of the chairman and vice chairman for the coming year. Nominations for chairman are now open. Do we have any nominations for chairman for the coming year?
I did not see that on our...
It's number C. Call to order.
Oh.
Looked right in there.
That one.
As soon as we can't talk to each other outside the meeting, it's kind of like we can't say anything, you know? So, yeah, I don't have any... I'm a new guy out here. I'm just happy to be keeping my head above water, so I don't have any changes that I'm going to propose myself.
I would nominate the existing, to stay the existing.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I second that nomination.
I'll third that.
Okay. Nomination for chairman is closed. The hall in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we need a roll call for that, do we? I don't. Nominations, thank you, I guess. Thank you very much. Okay, nominations for vice chair are open from the floor, and I will nominate Commissioner Wasden for the vice chairmanship again.
He's been a little bit of a curmudgeon this last year.
And that's why I'll second his motion.
Any other names? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
You can absolutely approve.
Could we pick somebody who isn't even here?
Well, we could've. That's been done before, too, yes. Will be nice to... Will be nice. Okay. Calls of the public. I don't have any notes for the calls of the public, for anybody discussing, not on the agenda. So we'll go on to old business. We don't have any of that, thank goodness. And on to new business. The first piece of business is CUP 19-001, and design review, 19-001, Van Horn Project. Jim, pet, floor is yours, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Williams, members of the commission. As you said, this is a conditional use permit and design review for a project at 1037 North Main. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit and design review in order to redevelop a parcel. Currently, there is an existing single-unit retail and a large patio area on the front of the site and a older residence to the rear of the site. The plan is to construct a second retail site on the ground floor with two residential units on the second floor above. The residential units on the second floor above is what triggers the requirement for the conditional use permit. Otherwise, this would just be a standard design review. It's located at the north end, towards the north end of Main Street, just before you get to the bend. The new unit, existing unit, is about a 900-square-foot unit. The new retail unit on the ground floor would be approximately 1,600 square feet, then the two residential units on the second floor. It is in the Old Town Historic District, and normally would be exempt from parking requirements, additional parking requirements. There are two spaces designed on the site for the residential units, so the applicant is sort of going beyond what the code would require as a minimum. This is currently what the site looks like from the street view, from across Main Street. And on the bottom is the existing picture. On the top would be what the finished product would be. The structure that would be demolished is this to the rear. Think I'm having a little technical difficulty. There it is. Thank you. I'll have my assistant do the slideshow. This is the rear of the existing residence that would be demolished. The other view of it. This is the site plan, basically showing, the shaded area is the new ground floor portion, that would be the additional 1,600-square-feet area. You can see the stairs there from Main Street that would be heading up to the two residential First floor plan, basically just showing the two, the one existing and the one new And second floor plan, there is one, two-bedroom and one, one-bedroom. The one-bedroom, that's the one that would be above the existing retail unit, is set back from the front, 12 feet? Oh, eight feet? Okay. So it is sort of, it is recessed. It's not going to be a flat wall right above the sidewalk at Main Street. These are some other examples of residential uses or mixed uses that presently exist, bocce, iron horse. So there are a few others that are in the Old Town area. This just adds to that mix of uses. One of the questions, projects that we've worked through on this is the side yard setbacks. By our current code requirement, a 10-foot-street side yard setback would be required. Staff is presently processing a text amendment that would reduce that in the case in this situation, or these, in situations like this, not just specifically for this one, that would allow it to develop similar to the other uses in Old Town. This is the patio courtyard area, as it presently exists. It's looking across the street to the west, and also across the street to the west, and looking south on Main Street from standing right in front of the project site. And looking to the north, that would be the property just across Yabipai, and looking to the east down Yabipai. And this is project, or the property to the rear, across the alley, that would be to the east of the subject site. It's currently two vacant lots in there. And then looking down the alley, looking south down the alley. So with that, that's all I would have to say. The architect, the applicant is here this evening also. Should there be any technical questions that I wouldn't be able to answer, but I'm available for any questions from the commission.
Mr. Dowell, start with you, sir.
Yabipai, Yabipai Street is pretty narrow right there. I saw in here, it talks about the existing sidewalk and the new sidewalk. Is that new sidewalk going to push out into Yabipai?
Currently, Yabipai is 18 feet in width. The idea is that at some point, that would be a one-way street. So yes, the sidewalk would be a part of that total street width improvement.
Have we, has streets, has streets made any recommendations for this yet? Like to fix it as a one-way before the project, so we don't have people driving over the sidewalk on a constant basis?
I think, well, I think that makes sense, that it be done at the time. But there is still discussion, which way would the one-way go?
Eastbound. Anyway. And are there going to be any improvements for the alleyway? Because that alleyway is also, currently is not a good alleyway. Again, I know this from experience, so I'm just curious if there's going to be any upgrade to that or in the plans.
The city engineer has required that it would be on the dimension or the width of their property.
Much like the Dairy Queen project?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, just sort of the length of their project would be.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, sir.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Norwood?
No questions.
All right. We'll have the applicant or representative for the applicant, please come forward. Anything else they would like to enlighten us about in this project?
Well...
Your name, sir. Your name for...
Christopher Noski. I'm the architect.
Good.
Excuse me. The sidewalk is something we went back and forth with engineering, whether to build it on our property or build it on the city's properties. And I guess, you know, Cottonwood has a stipulation when you do a development that they want to have continuation of the sidewalks. So it was decided that it would be built on their property so that the property owner wouldn't have the liability of having a sidewalk on their property. And they decided that the one-way street was the way to go. So that's how we proceeded. We've been back and forth with them, but that's the final compromise that's been made.
It should probably be a one-way now.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. And what we've done is we've set the building back so that there is the visible triangle. If you notice all the other old buildings in Old Town, not all of them, but most of them, there are zero lot lines, and they built to the side property run and the front, they'll have like a 45-degree angle, so that when cars come up, they can look down the sidewalk and not run over somebody, or look down the street and not get in an accident. So what we did, we're almost there. Site plan.
Site plan.
Yeah. You can see we left a patio in the front, so Yabipai's on the top, so there is a good visual line.
Do you want to assist?
No problem. Smart. Visual line. For safety.
Is that wall going to stay there? Are you going to...
We'll have a wrought iron fence.
Or just a fence? You can see through it?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant concerning construction or details?
Well, I'd just like to congratulate you on the two parking places. That's a plus.
My clients didn't want it, but I forced them to do it. I said if I lived there, I would want my space to be...
Absolutely.
And I think that's critical.
Very, very good.
I guess on that note, is there going to be, who will enforce these parking places? Because I know people down here get very creative in their parking, so if you leave a spot, they will park there.
It's private property. There'll be a sign.
Yeah. Just be prepared.
Why not?
Any other questions as well? I think we're pretty, you know, it looks pretty good. Thank you. Anybody from the public? Again, I do have no signed-in sheets, so I will close the floor to the public. And Mr. Dowell, you want to start us off with any discussion, comments?
I really like the project, and again, I like the revitalization of Old Town and the new projects going in there. And I think it's going to, every weekend, I drive down Old Town, I can see it's getting busier and busier and busier, and I like how this is becoming a hub. So I think this will help with that.
Okay. Commissioner Norwood?
Nice project. Congratulations, and we're happy to see improvements.
Commissioner Dowling?
I think that it is inevitable, and if it's going to be done, it should be well-done. And I know that Chris has a history of doing things well, so I think that's going to be, it'll work out just fine.
Good. Vice Chairman?
I agree. I think it's nice to see the mixed use. I like the residents in Old Town, and so I think it's a great project.
Good. Yes, I do, too. And I like the residential aspect of it. We get, you know, adding into the blend with just the commercial, and I think that's really great. I was hoping that Project Cross Street would get off the ground one of these days, but this is good. With that, Vice Chairman, I'll entertain a motion, please, sir.
I think we need to do these in two motions. Is that right?
Oh, yes, we do two motions. One for, to start with a conditional use permit, because we do have that on this case.
So I'll do the stipulations with the DR. So I move that we approve CUP 19-001. What are we calling this? I don't have a name with it, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a motion. The stipulation I'll put with the design review...
All right. Okay. Any, the only stipulation I would say is that, well, I guess we really don't need a time load on it particularly. We can do that with a design review.
Sure.
That's fine. All right. I have a motion from Vice Chairman to approve the conditional use permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a second. Commissioner Norwood, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Dowling?
Aye.
Mr. Norwood?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Wasden?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams?
Aye. You can absolutely carry. Thank you. Vice Chairman, a motion for the design review.
I move that we approve DR 19-001 with the stipulations as follows. One, the project is developed in accordance with the plan submitted on December 20, 2018, for the January 28, 2019 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Two, the project conforms to the Code Review Board comments dated February 20, 2018. Three, any other required supporting documents is submitted to staff and approved. Four, site plan and project approval is contingent on city council approval of a zoning code text amendment to allow community development director to approve the proposed side yard setbacks. Five, the property owner develops the alley and any other road improvements along Yabipai Drive in accordance with city standards, as approved by the city engineer. Six, a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of the condition shall be issued by the timeframe spelled out. Do you want to put...
Let's put a year, date. Would one year be fine?
That the project be completed one year from today's Planning and Zoning Meeting.
Okay. Does it cause any problems, heartaches with the...
Did you say one year to be completed?
Let's go one year for building permits.
Okay.
So we're limited to one year to secure your building permit, just so we can keep it on track. And, okay, that'll push it a little hard to get that all done.
It's harder to get people to build.
Yes, yes, it is. Okay. So Commissioner Norwood, is that fine with a second?
Yes.
For building permit for that stipulation?
Fine.
All right. We have a motion, second. All in favor? Brenda, would you?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, a roll call. Yes, roll call, vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Mr. Norwood?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Wasden?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams?
Aye. You can absolutely carry. Thank you. All right. Next order of business is...
Good luck.
Good luck, yes. Good. Looking forward to it. Is DR 19-002 Crimson Road Warehouses. Jim, has got that, too, sir?
Thank you, Chairman Williams and members of the commission. As you said, this is a design review for, we call it the Crimson Road Warehouses. This is two warehouse, maybe with, cut 50. The screen on first.
Same statement, number seven.
Okay.
What's our, tell three?
Oh, back on. Design review 19-002 for two warehouses on Crimson Road. Subject site is just off of Willard, just to the east of Willard, and close to Cottonwood Street. Design request to construct two metal-sided warehouse buildings. Subject site is zoned I-2, and each metal building would be 6,050 square feet. Currently, the property is vacant. The design of these two buildings would be accessed by one common shared driveway down the middle of the property. As a result of that, we are requiring that a shared access agreement be provided to the city prior to or with their construction drawings. The site is in a subdivided tract. Street improvements have already been installed. City engineer is requiring a small difference to the design of the actual driveway standard. This is a subject site looking to the south. The building to the left, as you see it there, is the Frito-Lay Distributing Warehouse, so this is immediately adjacent to that. As you see, the shared driveway would come down the middle of the property with the parking off to each side. Some architectural reference, three different views of it, and basically the one on the bottom, driving in through the center, with the building on the right and one on the left, identical buildings. Landscape plan, they have, they do meet with this plan, the requirements of the zoning code for quantity and setbacks and distances. And some of the surrounding property, like I said, this is the Frito-Lay Warehouse. This is looking to the north. That's the Spectrum Facility, a little bit farther away on Cottonwood Street. And looking to the east, and looking to the west. So that's all I have to present for you this evening. The architect is here tonight. Should you have any questions that need his input?
Any technical questions, Commissioner Dowell?
So this shared driveway is going to be much like the shared driveways on the airport or airpark?
Yes.
Yeah?
Just about the trash enclosures, I forgot where I saw that in here, if that's been something that, I know in the depictions, they're not there, but if that's been resolved with...
They would be required to be gated and screened with a solid...
Wall around, except, okay.
Correct.
All right. I didn't see that in here. Is that...
Yeah, they have a concrete slab with bollards and screen fencing at each dumpster location.
Okay. All right. Good.
Yeah, good. Any other questions?
Not somewhat, I guess, a question or slash observation. I looked, I'm somewhat familiar with that site, but I know that we're specifically requiring them to put in this other, this special driveway, but about 200 feet down the street, it's standard roll curb and gutter, and it kind of made me wonder why we're going to tear out perfectly good roll curb and gutter. I know that, is there plans to work on extremely large vehicles here, or is it just in case?
I think it was just in case.
Because it's like, what I'm saying is, 200 feet down the street, it's not required, and it's working just fine, and nobody's complaining, so I'm kind of a little leery of overreach on that aspect of it. There's not much I can do about it at this point, and that's up to engineering, but I wanted to at least make a point of it.
I think it's a good point, though. I...
Because it, that subdivision was put in as an industrial subdivision, and it was, they, it was approved, apparently, with roll curb and gutter for industrial subdivisions, and now we're telling, oh, wait, no, you can't use roll curb and gutter. So I understand the long, I understand the long game of it, but I just don't, I don't see the ideal and the wastefulness at the initial part of it.
And, yeah, I agree. Why tear something up until it needs to be torn up? If there is a problem, obviously, it's going to have to be repaired, but I agree. I don't, I think it's a little bit of an overreach to require that before there's any validation that it needs to be done.
Not that we can change that now, I guess, but...
That's part of the code review, you know?
Yeah, that is one of the engineering requirements, number four in his, the engineering requirements for that.
We'll talk to the applicant, see what...
Right. One other thing I do want to mention is, we are following up with our bicycle parking standards, so each site would be required to have two parking, two bicycle parking places on site. So I think this is one of our firsts. So hopefully, we'll start seeing that more in the future.
Okay. Commissioner Norwood, any technical questions? Jim, or what is...
So I was going to ask about bicycle.
Yeah, right.
More bicycle parking.
On a heavy industrial building?
Yeah, more bicycle parking. We need 20 bicycles.
The architect, Dan Server, is here this evening. She'll have any questions for him.
Okay. Dan, you want to come up?
Yeah.
Your name, please, sir.
Dan Server. I'm the architect of the job. Basically, straightforward, it's two 6,000-square-foot buildings. They'll have three bays, approximately 2,000 square feet each. Right now, tenant-wise, there's no intent to bring big trucks in there, so I'd love to revisit the mad stipulation for the driveway, but at this point, we've drawn it in already. We did agree to enclose it. There are going to have enclosures around the dumpsters, and they just ain't show up on the perspectives here, so other than that, if there's any questions you have, otherwise, I can answer.
Commissioner Norwood?
I don't have any questions, sir.
Vice Chairman, any?
Just, I think with regard to, you know, back to Jesse's comment, just about making an assumption of something is a little bit, I think, of an overreach from the engineering department, that I would be willing to, if that made a difference, to have you take with you in your discussions with them. I just don't think there's a need, and it's a requirement that I don't think is needed.
Yeah, I would love to revisit that.
I'd concur with that. I'd go with you.
Yeah, why build a sidewalk and then...
I agree with that, too.
Okay. Any other questions at this point?
Just, is, are they specs, or do you have them rented, just out of curiosity?
They're not rented at this moment. They're waiting for design review approval, and then they're going to start looking for who's going to go in there, so...
All right. Dan, thank you very much. Yes, Jim?
One thing the applicant did do is provide enough parking for the most heavily parked standard that we would have. So, you know, we talked about that early on. They could have gone with a lesser parking requirement. It might have limited who they could have rented to, but they went with the higher parking standard, so that opens up, you know, more flexibility for them on a spec building for not knowing who would be...
Jim, does that include the bicycle parking spaces?
But those are in addition to. Well, those are in addition to.
Okay, they're reinforced, though, as well, for heavy bikes, okay.
For heavy bikes.
Baron, you want to interject on this code approval? Do we, can we, when we, one of our stipulations apply with all engineering requirements, can we make an exception? Or are we locked into the whatever that?
Right now, I think we are locked in, and if there's any way applicant can work with the engineering department, which will be less standard.
Okay, that could be transmitted back to them?
Yes, if there's anything big changes, we can always bring it back to you as an update.
How about a stipulation that we recommend addressing this with engineering or taking that back?
Okay, we could maybe do that part of that compliance with engineering.
So they don't have to come back here?
They don't have to come back.
Worded, so they don't have to come back?
Yeah, right.
Can't do that?
They don't have to come back, you're right.
We'd be okay with that.
I don't have any notes from the public for discussion for the public, so I'll close the board to the public. Commissioner Norwood, you want to start this one off, please?
I'm sorry?
Would you please, you want to start comments, you're on the project, any question, any concerns other than?
Good luck, and again, glad to see the property being utilized. Good luck to you.
Mr. Dowell?
I'll follow up with pretty much the same. I know that in my other professional capacity, we looked at working for somebody else that was trying to do the infill in there and try and actually reclaim that because it sat for so long. So it was great to see the infill starting to take place and the people taking the steps to put that out there, so it can actually get some infrastructure infill and use what we've already got instead of chewing up more.
Right. Commissioner Dowell?
No, I think it's a good fit.
Good. I would agree with the other commissioners with regards to the, the street improvement. That can all be avoided. I think we'd really like to see that, appreciate Commissioner Dowling bringing that to our attention from his professional capacity and on the council, when that was approved. You know, that's been in place for industrial, so, you know, and maybe we can make that part of our
Sure.
Comment on number six. As far as stipulations, Dan, any problem with the developer with the stipulations as we have them? We'll make a little verbal thing, I don't know how, which way it'll carry, but we'll do that. Vice Chairman, I'll entertain a motion, please, sir.
Well, I move that we approve DR 19-002 Crimson Road Warehouses with the following stipulations. One, the project is developed in conformance with the site plan submitted January 8, 2019. Two, the project conforms to code review board comments dated August 21, 2000, I think that should be 18, right? Not 19. Three, building permits shall be applied for within net 12 months of planning commission approval. Four, shared access and shared parking agreement shall be submitted and approved prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Five, that a minimum of 20, I mean, two bicycle parking spaces be provided on each individual parcel. Six, comply with all engineering requirements prior to issuance of any permits. Seven, that applicant readdresses with engineering departments on the suggestion of the Planning and Zoning Commission the removal of the current?
Curb gutter and sidewalk.
Curb gutter and sidewalk. Seven, a certificate of zoning compli, or this would be eight, sorry. A certificate of zoning compliance document completion of the condition shall be issued by the timeframe specified.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dowling seconds the vice chairman's motion. Roll call vote, please. We have Commissioner Hart, but he wasn't here for the discussion, so.
My apologies.
That's okay, sir.
Glad you made it.
So we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Dowell.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Washington?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams?
Aye. Okay. Commissioner Hart, we're glad you could make it.
My apologies.
No problem?
I did something I shouldn't do. I closed my eyes for a few minutes.
I understand that, sir.
You weren't driving, right?
You were driving.
No, I weren't.
Yes, Commissioner Dowell wants to make sure of that. All right, on to the next item, number three, ZO 19-001 Amendment to Section 14, C-1 Light Commercial. Mr. Ellis, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission, good evening. ZO 19-001 is an amendment to Section 418, C1 Light Commercial Zone. November of 2018, you were presented with an amendment to front and rear setbacks within the C1 zone inside the Arts and Entertainment District. We did not include side yard because there already is a zero side yard setback. However, that's not the case if you're on a street side, as you were informed earlier on our project. So there were some concerns regarding the handful of properties that that might affect. Given the situation in the Old Town area with smaller properties, it makes sense to include side yards as well as an option to be modified. So that's before you at this moment.
It's the same amendment we approved before, just add side yard.
Correct.
To the code. All right. Commissioner Dowell, any questions, or Scott?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hart, any?
No.
Vice Chair?
Not at this time, no questions for Scott.
Okay, Commissioner Norwood?
No questions, I'm good.
Good. Commissioner Dowell?
It just looks like it ties up loose ends, so that's good.
That's good, well, yeah, that makes sense. Let's go back to council and get approval, and plenty of time for that new development to go in. Okay. I don't have any other discussion, or the public wanting to discuss it? Or any comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion, Vice Chairman, please.
I move that we recommend for approval to City Council, ZO-19-001 Amendment to Section 418, C-1 Zone Light Commercial Includes side yard setbacks to be modified at the discretion of the Community Development Director, allowing up to zero side yard setbacks along street or residential adjoining properties in C1 zoning within the Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District boundaries.
Do I have a second to the motion, please?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dowell seconds the vice chairman's motion. Roll call vote, please, starting with Commissioner Hart.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Washington?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams?
Aye. You can ask, we carry. Thank you. Next item, ZO 19-002 Amendment to Section 420, CR Commercial Residential Zone. Scott?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. ZO 19-002 is an identical text amendment to the C1 zone, this is just for the CR zone. At the request of the mayor, when the C1 went to council, he suggested also doing it for the CR zone. Same front yard, rear yard, and side yard, and also landscaping requirements as needed.
So it's for all three in this case?
Correct.
Okay. And we do have that along Main Street.
Yes. Right now, the CR zone only exists in a certain part of Old Town.
Right.
Doesn't mean it can't ever exist somewhere else, but right now, it's just limited to that area.
And we're limiting to that, okay. Commissioner Hart, any questions?
None.
Mr. Dowell?
No, sir.
Vice Chair, any?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Norwood?
No.
Mr. Dowling?
None.
I'm fine, too, but I think that's a good recommendation, and we'll close the floor to the public. I don't have any comment, anybody on the floor that wants to ask anything, so we'll close the floor. Any other further comments?
None.
Comments? Comments? I'll entertain a motion, Vice Chair.
I move that we recommend to, for approval to City Council, ZO-19-002 Amendment to Section 420, CR Zone Commercial Residential. Allow the Community Development Director the discretion of allowing up to zero front, side, and rear yard setbacks and reduce landscaper requirements on CR properties within the Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District boundaries.
Do I have a second to this motion?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dowell seconds the vice chairman's motion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye, aye, aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Washington?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams?
Aye. You can absolutely carry it. Okay, the next one must be amendment for, for Vice Chairman. Must have a pool next to his house.
I know, I meant the pool.
This is ZO 19-003 Amendment to Section 404, General Provisions. Yes, Scott, tell us about this one, sir.
Mr. Chairman, ZO 19-003 is for Section 404 G6A, General Provisions Regarding Swimming Pool Setbacks. This was brought before the commission several years ago to modify. Right now, the existing code is 10 feet from the main structure. A lot of concern with the new subdivisions. Meeting that 10-foot is just not practical. They put in extremely small swimming pools or can't put one in at all. Looking at neighboring communities, nobody else has 10-foot setback, they either have five or don't list one. Building Department, Fire Department don't have any concerns with it, so this is just being brought back to move forward to council for consideration as well, to make that setback five instead of 10 for the main structure.
And there's some fencing requirements in this for pools, or is that?
There are fencing requirements around pools.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a standard.
That is standard, okay. All right. Commissioner Hart, any questions on this one?
No.
Commissioner Dowell?
No, sir.
Okay, Vice Chairman, tell us about this.
Scott, does this include saltwater and freshwater pools?
Whichever pool you would like.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
You can't divert the river up your house. Okay.
I do have a question, Scott. I notice in here, it doesn't stipulate whether it's above ground or in-ground, is there a difference?
No, it's either one, the same.
How about above-ground size? Is there anything that says?
We don't have anything that specifies a size on it. I think within our definitions, we determine a certain depth.
This is mostly in-ground because of the excavation.
We do.
We put them wherever you want.
Yeah, so our definition of a swimming pool is any permanent structure containing or intended to contain water for recreational uses, including wading pools.
So you can't have a wading pool four feet from your house, is that right?
Based on the definition, we also have a provision that the depth of the water determines if it's considered that as well. I think it's one and a half or two feet. We'll have to go back and look that up, so if it meets that criteria, then yes, it's considered a swimming pool.
It would just seem to me we should have a little more definition to sizes and depth, unless it's already there and I'm missing something.
We can look into that.
Maybe, you know, it's no rush, but it's the winter time, but I think it would be good if it was pretty clear. It's not clear right now, I don't think. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Dowell?
The only thing I could think of is that this will actually maybe be helpful, because when people try and jump off the roof into their pool, 10 feet is kind of far. I will say, I may have done that once.
Not that we recommend that.
Just up the hill, but anyway, yeah.
On the other hand, it could make it more dangerous, more people will now trans. Because my kid's dead many times, years ago.
If you take a trash bag over you.
There you go, oh, yeah, okay. No other questions, comments? Vice Chairman, I'll entertain a motion then, sir.
I move that we recommend for approval to City Council, ZO-19-003 Amendment to Section 404.G6.A, General Provisions. Reduce the existing 10-foot swimming pool setback from the main structure to five feet.
All right, do I have a second to that motion, please? Commissioner Hart seconds the vice chairman's motion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Washington?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams?
Aye, unanimously carried. Okay, I see we have no discussion items, informational reports and updates. My term will be, it might be only a month long, depending on what the City Council does, February 5th, to approve reappointment to Christian Dowell and myself, but anyway, we do that, and I understand we have a third applicant.
Yes.
So we can have a full commission, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Starting in February, that would be nice. And, so it's good. Baron, you have something you need to discuss?
I just want to update on some of the current projects.
Yes.
Starbucks is going through building permit process, we are very close to getting their permit. And Dunkin' Donuts, just next door, they just submitted their plan review, so we will be reviewing that, so it's on the way. And as you know, Dutch Brothers Construction is going on in the Food City Shopping Center. And the construction is moving along, and you can really see the structure.
Well, no longer going to be a coffee desert.
Yes, yes, we can. Circle K, any word from them, or?
Well, everything is moving along, we are in touch with them again, we had some telephone conversations. And also, Goodwill will be moving from their location in order to Circle K move on. So everything has a schedule, and they are working on that.
It's still going. About the apartments up on 89A across the hospital, any update on that?
That's again, moving along, and they had their issue with, not issue really, but they had to do some paperwork with HUD. It's normal process, and when we had a meeting, they were taking care of those, and they are ready to move.
It's still online, and I see the, but my doctors have all moved the hospital out of their building, so I understand that's going along, yeah, they're cracking right along on that remodel, and.
Scott mentioned the Olive Garden was coming in, is that true, Scott?
Yes, you said you were going to build it on your property.
Oh.
I was looking for Gold Crown.
What about that 89 and Vine and across the street, Immaculate Inception, anything? Did they finalize Immaculate Inception now, is that?
It is not finalized, but the meetings are going on for the infrastructure, and mainly for water and sewer meetings going on. As soon as they resolve those, they will move with their first phase.
Are sewers going to have septic systems there, though, right?
They do have it, but it is not enough for the new additions.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add to that, we met with some of the team, their team last week. And they are right now looking at water issue for fire, so not really for actual use yet. We hope to allow them to begin to bring things on campus by July, so we've got a deadline at the middle of February to get water for fire figured out. Once we get that figured out, they're going to start, hopefully, by July. They are not planning on any septics at this point. They were talking about some lines, some leach lines possibly, that will be converted into stormwater drainage at the end, given that there's a lack of flow early on when the development first starts, but they're working through it all, and I think we're pretty close with water, with Roger over there, and with the fire chief, and Tom, so it could be a false start, but I think we're actually moving along to start that project.
Okay, so there actually, so there is some movement on that.
There is, where the city and the developers are real close to an agreement, I think.
Okay, I know that's been an ongoing thing for.
No, no, no.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, that's been an ongoing thing for several years, I know, it's been a.
The reason, there's a February 12 deadline to water tanks, the water tanks that they would need to meet our fire demands out there. So they seem serious about starting to buy things and move things out there, so.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Commissioner Hart?
Notice that the Rocky Nar, or formerly Rocky Nar, is moving along, have they given us an estimated time of completion of construction?
We don't have the date for finishing, but as long as it's moving along, so.
Yeah, it looks like it's coming along really well.
Yeah, they're doing, I mean, it's coming along pretty nicely.
Yes, yes, it's creating improvement over that. Yes, yes, it's great improvement over that, the prior structure there, that's for sure. And, yeah, I see them quite often, you know, go by there, and they're, they're out there working and doing different things, and, uh, so I think that's a gold thing. Yeah. Any other updates? Okay. Uh, any other questions, any other updates?
I had, I had asked about eighty-nine and Vine. Is, is that dead, or is that still...
Oh, that's what's...
Actually, that's what the city manager was answering for that. It's all together with...
I thought he was talking about the church.
No, no, together.
They, once the problem is solved for the in- infrastructure, it, it will serve both areas.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that'll, that'll serve that subdivision as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause they're not gonna tie into the sewer system down at Verde Santa Fe.
Right.
It'll be, uh, with the church, okay, and that makes sense.
So they're gonna move ahead with that?
Yes, yeah, looks...
Eighty-nine and Vine.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. So we oughta be seeing some action on that pretty soon, hopefully.
We hope so.
Hope so, all right. Commissioner Dowling, any?
Nothing here.
Anything else, Vice Chairman? I entertain a motion.
I motion that, are we sure we wanna dismiss? I mean, this is like before, and now... I, I was gonna throw in one last comment, cause I agree with Jesse and, uh, about kind of the engineering. I know this, we've got the engineering codes and whatnot that we're not privy to, but, um, I think you were, I was at the city council meeting maybe two months ago, and, um, I happened to get up, uh, Bob Backus was there with a warehouse up in Air Park Road. And, um, he's built most of those warehouses, and we've had a, a stipulation that, that we didn't put sidewalks in. We did, um, crushed granite along there, the walkways, and the engineering department required on this one property on the corner sidewalks that contradicted everything that we've done up there. Um, in addition, that was, that came through most recently last year. And it places, it, it contradicts what we said, cause that wasn't a requirement from engineering at that time, but it got slipped in after. And I think that places a real burden on our builders, and, and city council sided with Mr. Backus, basically. There was, they, they put in some sidewalk, but the grade on that was crazy. I, I'm, I'm kinda pointing at you guys, cause you were at that meeting, but, um, it, it seemed like a real overreach. So I, I'm glad you brought that up, Jesse, because I, it seems like there is kind of this overreach, um, that is way too demanding, especially given the, the property up there, and the city council agreed with that. So I don't know if there's a change in engineering, but it seems like, um, there's a little bit of overreach that I think is affecting some of those in our, some, in our building industry here.
We will take this to engineering department and discuss that.
Right. Scott?
I did have a meeting with the engineer, um, on other stuff similar to that. They recently had some new engineering standards passed, um, and they're gonna look at putting in kind of an appeal process to that, if they don't think it's necessary, or if it's in a situation like up on Air Park Road where the sidewalks just don't exist, and they probably never will, they can go get, go to council and say, hey, can we get this waived? So there is, they're looking at making a provision to make exceptions as needed.
Good. That, that, it was just such a, a call-out from that property up there. Would've been the only piece with sidewalk on it. And we, when this originally came through, we, we specifically requested the, the crushed granite because it, it was provided actually a better look to that area, and it's industrial, so to speak, anyway. Um, so, uh, I mean, that's like a burden that we've imposed on the back end, and it's, so I'm glad there's an appeal process. And similar to this, I don't know that we need to anticipate what's going in there and go to the expense, especially on the building end, to have somebody tear up the sidewalk to put in something that may or may not be used, so... I'm glad there's an appeal process coming.
All right. Ron, thank you, sir, for attending. I know you've got a very busy schedule, and, uh, we invite you back anytime. We appreciate your attendance and your comments and helping us log. Uh, Vice Chairman, I entertain that motion now.
I motion that we dismiss. I, I call for a roll call on that.
Second. All in favor? Aye, thank you.
I was, I was gonna make sure you were awake.